Call the role to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu.
Present.
And Counselor Zegum. Madam President.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask all counselors and guests to please rise and we will invite up our wonderful clerk to lead us with in an invocation. All four of us.
Even though this looks like.
What?
Sorry. Infinite and ultimate mystery. The citizens of Boston call you by many names. God, Yahweh, Wonka, Kantaka, Allah, Brahman. These names planted and transplanted here. The great traditions of the world now growing in our own garden. We are joined as sunflower is joined with the flames while it reaches upward beyond itself. We are joined as the rivers and streams are joined as they travel to the ocean of the planet. We are joined as the eagle is joined with the sky. So we are joined in this chamber with the citizens on whose behalf we hold this office of press. And joined with the past and the future as we live together honoring you as the eternal spirit of service. You who from ancient times has joined us in shape like covenant, compact constitution, as the means by which we co-create a humane, educated, and prosperous society. You, spirit of generations, bless all those here and everyone serving this public wheel in many ways. On this day, new day, accept us anew as we join again with the calls to stewardship for liberty, justice, righteousness, and love. Amen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now Counselor Campbell, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We'll start with approval of the minutes from last meeting. Are there any changes or amendments? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved and we'll begin with communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Docket number 0941, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the 2017 Summer Jobs Fund in the amount not to exceed $500,000 from various donors for employment and enrichment for Boston youth at community-based organizations. The funds will be administered by the youth engagement and employment.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please mark that Counselor Jackson is present? And on docket 0941, Chair recognizes Chairwoman of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to suspend the rules and pass docket 0941 in order to accept and expend a grant for the 2017 Summer Jobs Fund. This body has been supportive of summer jobs for our city's youth every fiscal year and this grant will support community-based organizations that are working on the front lines with our young people in order to connect them with these summer employment opportunities. I move to suspend and pass this today.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. This time Counselor Presley moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0941. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0941 has been passed.
Docket number 0942, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $50,000 from Massachusetts Department of Health and Human Services to develop overdose prevention strategies that align with recommendations of the Department of Public Health, the Bureau of Substance Abuse Services, opioid working group. The grant will be administered by the Boston Police Department.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, Counselor Asabi George.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise at this moment to ask that docket number 0942, that we suspend and pass so that we can get these dollars into the hands of those that can do this work and that we accept and expend the $50,000 for 0942. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. At this time, Counselor Asabi George moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0942. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0942 has been passed.
Docket number 0943, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $41,895 in the form of a grant for the care and maintenance of the Samuel Adams Edgar Allan Poe statues in the Hungarian Revolution and Angel memorials well awarded by the Boston Foundation to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture.
Along the same lines, Chair moves for suspension and passage of this docket to make sure that our Office of Arts and Culture gets the is able to expend these funds shortly. Any comments or questions? Then at this time, all in favor of passing docket 0943, say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0943 has been passed. Report to public officers and others. Madam Clerk, if you could read docket 0944 through 0952, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0944, notice was received from the Mayor of the reappointment of Priscilla Douglas as a member of the Boston Public Library Board of Prestise for term expiring April 30th, 2019. Docket number 0945, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Jerry Boyd as the Commissioner of the Mayor's Commission for Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board for a term expiring on June 1st, 2020. Docket number 0946, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Felicia Battle's Birdsong as the Commissioner of the Mayor's Commission for Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board for a term expiring June 1st, 2020. Docket number 0947, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Eugene Gloss as the Commissioner of the Mayor's Commission for Persons with Disability Advisory Board for a term expiring June 1st, 2020. Docket number 0948, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Dasha Lubravazga Ya. I think that's pretty close. As a Commissioner of the Mayor's Commission for Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board for a term expiring June 1st, 2020. Docket number 0949, notice was received from the Mayor of the reappointment of Kyle Robado, a Commissioner for the Mayor's Commission for Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board for term expiring on May 1st, 2019. Docket number 0950, notice was received from the Mayor of the reappointment of Kyle Richardson as the Commissioner of the Mayor's Commission for Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board for term expiring on June 1st, 2019. Docket number 0941, notice was received from the Mayor of the reappointment of John Winsky as Commissioner for the Mayor's Commission for Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board for a term expiring on March 1st, 2019. Docket number 0952, notice was received from the Mayor of his absence in the city from 6:45 a.m. on Friday, June 23rd until 8:45 p.m. on Tuesday, June 27th, at 2017.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0944 through 0952 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0953, the constable bonds of the following have been duly approved by the collective treasurer were received. Gavin Castagna, Marcio Fonseca, Derek Hughes, Melvin Johnson, Tonya Marshall, Evelyn Evangeline Maxwell Davis, Shara McLaughlin, Donna Moore, Cynthia Sanchez, and Israel Timberlake.
Unless there's any objection, given that this is another batch of constable bonds similar to ones we've already approved, Chair will move for suspension and passage under the usual terms and conditions. Any comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor of docket 0953, under the usual terms and conditions, say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0953 has been passed under the usual terms and conditions.
Docket number 0954, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Boston redevelopment authority of the Fifth Amendment to the report and decision on the Hemingway Apartments Chapter 121A project.
Docket 0954 will be placed on file. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action and our budget dockets. Madam Clerk, if you would read docket 0908 through 0911 together, please.
Docket number 0908, message and order for annual appropriation and tax order for the 2018 filed in the Office of the City Clerk on June 19th, 2017. Docket number 0, do you want me to give them individually?
Yes, all four together. Yes, all four together, please.
Docket number 0909, message and order for an annual appropriation of the school department for the FY 2018. Docket number 0910, message and order approving an appropriation of $40 million to the post to the other post-employment benefits known as OPEB Liability Trust Fund established under Section 20 of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32B, filed in the Office of the City Clerk on June 19th, 2017. Docket number 0911, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to appropriate the amount of $1 million from the city's capital grant fund in order to increase Boston's Vision Zero Capital Program investment in fiscal year 2018, known as FY 18, to $4.1 million. This funding, which will be which will expand our neighborhood slow street program, is part of the city's comprehensive investment in street safety, filed in the Office of the City Clerk on June 19th, 2017.
On all four dockets making up this portion, the operations budget, Chair recognizes Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, Madam President, and I rise and ask unanimous consent to speak on the entire fiscal 18 budget, including the capital budget, which is a sign for further action
Injection.
And soon to be called for the second vote.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Before I speak on the budget, there's just so many people to thank and let me start by thanking you, my colleagues. You know, for the past two months, your active participation and thoughtful review of this budget has led to a very transparent and productive session and I want to thank you all for your contributions. The incredible City of Boston central staff. Kate Sullivan, Cora Montreux, Michelle Goldberg, Candace Morales, and our own Jattick award-winning Kerry Jordan, back in the back there. The Mayor's Office of Budget Management overseen by our CFO, Dave Sweeney, Budget Director, Katie Hammer, and everyone in the Office of Budget Management, including Jim Williamson, instrumental in developing the budget and responding to our questions. I'd also like to quickly recognize Ellen Hatch and Deb DeLeo for being especially helpful as well. Thank you to the BPS administrators for their significant contributions to this process and to Superintendent Tommy Chang, Eleanor Lawrence, Nate Cooter, David Bloom, Rob Consalvo, Ellen McDonough, for again, being very responsive to our questions. The Mayor's Intergovernmental Relations Team, especially Neil Doherty and Katie King, who were helpful in setting up all the hearings and jumped through hoops to make every every hearing run smoothly. Administration officials who voluntarily joined us during the extensive review process and provided thorough and thoughtful written and oral testimony information for our hearings. I'd like to thank the Mayor for presenting a fiscally responsible plan for our city. Finally, I'd like to thank the members of the public who came to hearings and participated in this process or submitted written testimony. Your advocacy is appreciated and this was a better process than ever before because of the thoughtful input provided by members of the public. The FY 18 operating budget is the largest in the history of the City of Boston totaling $3.15 billion. This is an increase of $148.5 million, almost 5% over last year's operating budget. The Boston Public School budget is also the largest in the city's history totaling more than $1 billion. To fully understand this budget, we held 28 hearings totaling nearly 60 hours of testimony. Over 20 hours of that testimony was dedicated to the Boston Public School budget. We also received approximately 615 pages of written testimony from city departments and several presentations on specific subject areas in addition to the detailed budget books provided by the Office of Budget Management. This has been an exhaustive review performed at an intense pace. The resubmital capital budget now includes a $1 million increase to the Vision Zero initiative. The resubmitted operating budget now includes two new full-time positions on the mobile shops team, two new full-time positions with the graffiti busters team, four new mental health clinicians added to the best team to work with the Boston Police Department to respond to cases that involve people displaying signs of mental illness. A new full-time inspectional service employees to meet the increased demand for residential and commercial inspection. Overall, the budget supports basic city services and quality of the improvements for all residents of Boston. Important investments that matter to everyone. Classes for police, fire, and EMS, including an additional class of 20 police cadets. $14 million for extended learning time for for over 15,000 additional students. Six new hokeys. 180 new bike racks around the city. 40 miles of paving and the upgrade of 900 ramps for ADA compliance. Data analytics used to improve the effectiveness of all departments and programs, increasing the digital presence of our libraries to meet modern needs. Renovations in senior housing develops developments in Brighton and South Boston. Renovations to city parks and ballfields. Extending hours of operations to both nights and weekends for the PATHS program to combat opioid addiction. Implementation of the new community assistant teams that place EMTs in non-transport vehicles deployed to areas with high non-transport haul volume. This will provide assistance to vulnerable populations while freeing up transport services for those in critical need. The budget process is incredibly difficult to navigate. In a perfect world, every priority put forth by this council and the public would be given the budget allocation it deserves. But the constraints of our city's financial resources require us to make some difficult decisions, just like our own home budgets. The budget before us right now is not perfect and I am positive nobody in this building would argue that it is. That said, the budget before us is a responsible and sustainable plan for our city's future. We live in a time in which there is tremendous uncertainty coming from the federal and state government. Now more than ever, we need to make sure that we do not overextend our commitments and maintain the strong financial health we have cultivated in recent years. As I'm sure my colleagues remember, the City of Boston has not always had the financial might we now have. The practical approach we have taken with our city's budget has allowed us the flexibility to make targeted investments in our schools, parks, and transportation infrastructure, among other important investments we have made this year. We have also been fortunate enough to make investments in specific areas of concern like the PATHS and BEST programs to address the serious issues of opioid addiction and mental health. And in addition to these key investments, we're also managing to pay down our city's liabilities in order to leave a stable city for our children and our grandchildren. Our AAA bond rating reflects our fiscal prudence and the increase in operating school and capital budget that we see for fiscal year 18 reflect a continuation of this careful stewardship. Aggressive management of our long-term liabilities, strategic budget management have given us a responsible and sustainable budget. I strongly recommend passage of the FY 18 budget in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. This time, we'll take comments from any counselors on any pieces of the budget and afterwards we'll vote on the operations and capital pieces separately. Counselor Zegum, you have the floor.
Thank you. Be after a bunch of people. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, my colleagues, for being slow on the button. Want to say I want to thank Counselor Siomo for, you know, once again, chairing this arduous process and making sure we do a thorough, in-depth look at all of our city departments before voting on this. I will be voting in support of this budget. I do have some concerns that I want to talk about briefly, but overall, I think there's a lot of good in this budget. There's a lot of improvements. I think in particular renewed commitment, renewed and increased commitment to the Vision Zero program, our street redesigns, many of which is happening in my district to great success, is phenomenal to see. The addition of new graffiti busters, that's one of the calls I get over and over and over and the long waitlist, something that people find very frustrating and through no fault of our Public Works Department, they can be overwhelmed. So I'm glad to see that. Increase in the needle response teams, great to see, and in particular, additional hokeys and the firehouse cleanings for the fire department, I think are really encouraging. These are small things. These are not big parts of the budget that I'm talking about. These are things that both improve the quality of life for people in our neighborhoods and in the case of the BFD firehouse cleanings, literally improving the life and the lifetime of our firefighters. Been proud to work with the Last Call Foundation previously, Commissioner Finn and others on this issue, and it's great to see moving forward on that. What I'm a little disappointed about in this budget is once again, there is not funding for a pilot program for our city housing voucher. I think we need to get there. We need to continue talking about this. We need to make sure that people in our city, whether it's our several thousand public school students who are experiencing homelessness, whether it's others who are experiencing homelessness, have a path to a stable home in our in the City of Boston. We need to continue working on this, particularly in the face of continued cuts from the federal government. You know, I think we we have a long way to go. We need to do more of this in the City of Boston. And I would also want to continue that conversation and make sure as we have conversations around the CPA and implementation there, that the appointees from this body are open to a program like that and I will continue working on that. So I thank you for that, Madam President. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership through this process.
Thank you, Counselor Zegum. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also rise to commend our good chairman and friend from District 9, Counselor Mark Siomo, on leading in all of all of you for your participation and particularly central staff, really did a phenomenal job as they always do. I believe it was Mario Cuomo who said, "You campaign in poetry and you govern in prose," which is a great expression that I've always I've always liked and I think it's very true. You know, in campaigning, it's difficult, but it's it is poetry and then once you get there and to do the nuts and bolts, it can be it can be a hard job, but obviously an incredibly important job. I will be voting in support of this budget because it is a good budget. Obviously, you know, as has been said by the prior two speakers and I anticipate subsequent speakers, it's not perfect and there are things that we want to see, but the end of the day, this is a solid, strong, smart budget. It's good for our city, that's good for our constituents, and it's good for the future. We talk about increases, obviously, to those quality of life constituent service issues such as the Department of Public Works or Transportation. Vision Zero is absolutely crucial and to see that $1 million is wonderful. We talk about what's going to happen in many of the capital expenditures that we'll get to later, including nearly $5 million for Jamaica Pond Parkway project, which is going to allow for people who use a wheelchair with difficulty walking to better navigate a crown jewel of the Emerald Necklace, as well as runners, walkers, and cyclists. We talked about BPS and the fact that there is a $20 million increase, a nearly 4% increase there. Weighted student funding formula is a fairer, more equitable system that we have in place now, so when school populations decrease, you will see the the money follow the students, but there's also a soft landing mechanism put in place to address that as well. This is a good budget, one that I am proud to support and will be voting in the affirmative vote. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to thank Counselor Siomo for his leadership through all the hearings and the follow-up to get us the documentation and responses to our questions during the hearing. I also want to thank central staff for their hard work and and dedication as well. Often, we got responses that weren't responsive and they would follow up, so thank you. I too will be voting in affirmative for both budgets, both the operating and the BPS budget. But I must say, I have to say a few words about the BPS budget because this was a very difficult decision for me to get to. While I'm excited about the operating budget, particularly the Youth Development Fund, which I spearheaded and really push for, and this will be a fund that would actually go to support youth and youth development programs in the City of Boston that serve our young people and keep them out of the criminal justice system, it's a fund that I hope will grow from $250,000, which it is at now, to millions. I'm happy with the Indigent Burial Fund. I'm happy with the additional BEST providers and frankly, I want to thank Counselor Asabi George and Counselor Presley for their leadership on that. I'm happy with the additional $1 million investment in Vision Zero. Of course, the Sharps team, given the opioid crisis, we need more people out there picking up needles. I'm happy with all of that. But last year, I voted against the BPS budget because I thought it cut programs, frankly, that were proven successful in an effort to introduce new programming. This year, I'm voting in favor because, one, it's not easy to for us to actually go through the BPS budget. We don't have the power to go line by line and say, you know what, transportation, I don't want to approve that, but I want to approve some other piece of the BPS budget. So it really shows the limitation of our power as counselors. But I'm voting because frankly, it includes good things for the schools within my district. Excellence for all, further investments in pre-K, extended learning time, adding that to different schools in my district. And I don't want those programs and those frankly, good programs that are going to go to schools in my district to be done away with because of a no vote on this budget. But I do have grave concerns frankly about the lack of a strategic plan from BPS to achieve the goal of providing a quality education to all students in the City of Boston, particularly those in my district. I think we lack still a blueprint on how each department plays a role in achieving that goal. I think simply voting no will not produce that strategic plan, so I pledge to work with BPS sooner in the process, sooner in the budget process, to help come up with conversation, to help come up with a strategic plan, to work with them, to actually understand what that plan is and to make sure that it's in terms that my constituents can understand. that plan is, and to make sure that it's in terms that my constituents can understand. I was happy to see, for example, an additional investment and focus on Level 3, 4, and 5 schools, and frankly, looking at ways in which to turn around those schools, many of which are in my district. But while there might be small plans like that to turn around schools that are Level 3, 4, and 5, there isn't a larger plan to fix the system as a whole. And so my vote today is in favor of those initiatives, and that's it. But I will say this: I can't say that every year going forward that I'm going to vote in favor of the BPS budget. I think I said yesterday in our council resubmitting hearing that I frankly think that BPS has a lot of money, almost 1 point, almost $1.1 billion. And I think, frankly, we need to hold them more accountable. Last year in the budget cycle, Transportation, using that again as another example, we said we'd save $10 million as a cost savings to try to reduce that Transportation budget. That budget is almost $120 million. And instead of realizing that $10 million cost savings, we got $5 million in FY17, and we're hoping to get $5 million in FY18. And frankly, I think that's unacceptable. Constituents, taxpayers, parents need to know that when BPS says they're going to do something, that we, that we are going to hold them accountable to that, and that we're not going to keep giving them additional money without them realizing that, frankly, when they make pledges and promises, that we actually are going to keep them to their word on that. And so I think going forward, in order to hold them more accountable, we need to think about doing things a little differently. And for me, doing things a little differently looks at how do we come up with not only strategic plans to solve the problem, but if we're going to do cost-saving measures and try to save money, that we actually think outside the box, that we think creatively. So for example, with Transportation, I would love to see every single alternative that is possible for Transportation to save money. And what I mean by that is, it might mean paying our parents to bring their kids to school, and if that saves us $70 million, well, guess what? We have an additional $70 million that we can invest in other things that BPS might need. It might be paying Ms. Johnson in my neighborhood to do a carpool of the people in her community, and that might save us $40 million. Planning really involves looking at any and every alternative that is available to us, thinking critically about the pros and cons, and then going from there. And I want to see that from BPS. My constituents want to see that from BPS. And more importantly, my parents and my students want to be a part of those solutions. They want to be a part of those conversations. And I know that BPS is taking some great steps, and I want to acknowledge some of the great work, the BPS bill, the financial planning, but sometimes I think we don't know how all of those plans connect with one another. One department may be doing some really great work, another department may do, may be doing some other great work. We don't know how it all comes together to support the larger goal of ensuring that every kid in the city of Boston has a quality education. One of the questions I asked at the budget hearings about closing the achievement gap, and I was very sad to see that the numbers and the data doesn't seem to change, that students of color are still not performing at the same level as their white and Asian counterparts. And I asked, what is the timeline around closing that achievement gap? And we talked about it probably takes five years, which is devastating if you're a parent with a student in the BPS system, that you have to wait five years before we can actually close that gap substantially. And while I understand that it takes time to do that work, I said, okay, what's that plan look like? And the response was, well, the plan involves every single department in the city, in the BPS department, and that every department in BPS can play a role in closing the achievement gap. That is fantastic. I am still waiting for, I asked for, a document that says, okay, what that plan is, and the role that every department plays, and the benchmarks and goals that they have set out for themselves in closing that achievement gap, and the role that that department plays in closing the gap. Seeing that on paper, parents want to see that on paper, constituents want to see that on paper. How else will we hold BPS accountable? How else will we hold ourselves accountable if we don't see that on paper and if we're not on the same page? So I, I push BPS to think more critically, to be a little bit more open-minded, and frankly, to share more of these, this planning, which is happening behind the scenes, and I know much of it is, with the public in a more transparent way. Lastly, I'll say, when I talk about BPS having too much money, what I mean by that is, I know it's extremely expensive to make sure that every student has a quality education, but what I mean by it is, if we are going to give BPS more money, and they can't meet certain benchmarks and certain promises they've made to this body, they shouldn't get more money. Because when we're giving them more money, millions of dollars, even if it's only $10 million more, other departments in the city of Boston don't get that money. And we have seniors, we have, who need housing. We have police, police districts that need more police officers. I have C-11 and B-3 who have call volumes that are ridiculously high, and they don't have enough officers to respond to these calls. We have vacant and abandoned lots in my property, where we have to have a better plan on cleaning, cleaning those up, so that we don't keep getting the same constituent calls about trash and rodents, or buildings or abandoned lots that look terrible on someone's street. There are other priorities that are equally important, and so if we're giving more money to another department, they need to be delivering. Otherwise, we need to be taking that money and reinvesting it in other departments that need it just as much. I understand the federal government and the state government are retreating on a lot of these things, and it's sad and unfortunate that the city of Boston has to step up a little bit more, but these needs still exist for our constituents, so we have to step up a little bit more. That's what makes our city so, frankly, so damn great. And so I'm excited to, to vote for the budget in partnership with the mayor, as well as my colleagues. I will say I will continue to challenge departments and, and look to hold them accountable. I also am an optimistic person. I do think BPS can make sure that every student, ensure that every student has a quality education from K-1 to the 12th grade. I'm a product of BPS. My father was born in 1933 in Roxbury. He was a product of BPS, and it was excellent then, it was excellent when I was there, and it can be excellent for every student in the city of Boston. And frankly, it's the only solution for most of our families. So thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to go a little bit longer than usual. I do want to thank BPS staff, their Budget Officer Eleanor, their Chief of Staff, and their team for the thoughtful responses, and frankly, for showing up at every single hearing with every team member they could bring. I want to thank every other department that showed up at the hearings to give us thoughtful feedback and responses to our questions. And I want to thank the mayor for his partnership, particularly on the Youth Development Fund and the Indigent Burial Fund. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for your hard work. I learned a lot from you, and we continue to work together for years to come, except for those who are retiring, of course. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Campbell. Councilor Lamontina, you have the floor.
That was awesome. I just want to say ditto, whatever you just said, that was great. Madam President, thank you for the opportunity to speak at my last budget. It's 11 years, I can't believe it. My first budget, I came in on a Monday, sworn in a Monday, and I voted on the budget on a Wednesday. And Rob Cassab would tell you I was a yes-bow the following year, next day. But this is my 12th budget, and I want to commend Councilor Siomo for all these years doing the budget. He did a great job, he knows a lot of work. And I want to thank the staff. I also want to thank the administration. For years and years, I always have been saying, you need to take care of basic city services. So I want to commend the mayor and the administration for finally getting the increase in the basic city service department. Because for years and years, those departments have been neglected, and it's the quality of life issues that matter in the neighborhood, making sure that the streets are clean, those vacant lots are clean, the parks are nice and they're clean, the streets are safe, and I think this budget does it. So I'm going to be brief, because Andrea said it all. And you're right, we should hold the school department accountable for the money they spent, because that $40 million that they're getting this year could be spent and do more in the basic city services for the people that live in the city. So I want to take this opportunity to commend the administration, and to my colleagues, good luck in the future. I know that Boston is in good hands with all of you, so thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor Lamontina. Councilor Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, adding my voice to the chorus, thank you, Chairman Siomo, for your able stewardship throughout these marathon of hearings, central staff, and of course, the administration, Katie and Dave, and Neil and Katie. Thank all of you for your accessibility and responsiveness throughout this process, and especially, maybe it was Councilor Campbell that was saying, sometimes the answers that we were getting during the actual hearing were not often as comprehensive as we would like, and so required a lot of work offline. So I just want to thank everyone that played a role in that. As I always do when considering the city of Boston budget, I look at each of the three budgets independently: capital, operating, and BPS. The capital budget is making necessary investments in every single neighborhood of our city, and I'm thrilled to finally see a library, a branch library, return to the Chinatown neighborhood. It is a huge victory for the neighborhood and for those advocates who have sojourned and rallied for so long. A library is so critical to the health of a community. It was an injustice that they went without one for so long, but we thank the advocates for their vigilance, and it's a new day, and we're glad that that library will be returning. So I look forward to voting in support of the capital budget. The operating budget is far from perfect. I understand and share the frustration of the advocates pushing for a city-funded housing voucher program. I was proud to support the letter authored by Councilor Zachem and Wu in support of this program's implementation this fiscal year. However, it is clear, we will not see a voucher program realized this year. But advocates, I heard you loud and clear yesterday, and I pledge my support to continue to be an ally and to work closely with Councilor Zachem and Wu and all of you to push the appointed members of the CPA Committee to prioritize and leverage dollars towards the creation of this program. Given the impassioned and courageous testimony we heard yesterday, it and the phone calls to our offices daily underscore the fact that we must act, and we must act soon. Now, as a policymaker, I have to consider and weigh the budget in its entirety. The operating budget, I want to thank Councilor Asabi George for her partnership and our shared advocacy and a push for the expansion of the BEST program, adding four full-time mental health clinicians to the Boston Police Department. I thank you for your partnership and your advocacy, and I thank the administration for listening and for onboarding these positions in the budget resubmitting. This is an investment that will keep our first responders and residents safe, with trained clinicians de-escalating situations. It is truly in the best interest of residents, police officers, and the general public safety, and most of all, those suffering with mental illness and their families. The expansion of this program will divert people suffering from mental health challenges from the criminal justice system, and instead into treatment and care that can put them on a pathway to healing. I'm pleased to see the additional investment in Vision Zero funding and full-time employee inside the Boston Transportation Department to support the goals of Vision Zero. And I'm encouraged by the creation of, and I commend Councilor Campbell for her leadership, in the Youth Development Grant Program to support summer jobs for our youth, as well as the establishing of an Indigent Burial Fund for families impacted by homicide who have a financial need. So I'm a yes or no capital budget, and this operating budget has earned my support, although it is not perfect, by adding additional investments that I know will create healthier neighborhoods. As for the BPS budget, I am encouraged by the expansion of pre-K seats, getting us closer to excellence for all. We know that a lot of the outcomes we're trying to address on the back end begin at that early education point, so I'm encouraged by that, as well as the investments to support our, our homeless students. But as I said at yesterday's hearing on the resubmitted budget, I cannot support a BPS budget that does not make the increased investments in social-emotional wellness supports that I have advocated for since joining this council nearly eight years ago. I remain frustrated that the comprehensive sexual health curriculum we worked so hard to draft in partnership with BPS and to ultimately see adopted as a part of its wellness curriculum is not being equitably administered due to a shortage of health educators and a lack of a clear funding plan. Now, it's true, there are fixed costs in the BPS budget and stagnant state aid with higher charter school assessments. This is all true. The mayor, to his credit, has written critical legislation to fix the broken state funding system for education, which has created these structural deficits, and I am grateful for that and will lend my support to those efforts. But I do believe this budget, this BPS budget in its current form, is large enough to make these investments and to get us closer to a nurse in every school in the district. I want to share some numbers with you. As recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics, along with the clinicians, the recommended ratio is 1 to 5 to 700. BPS's ratio for nurses and clinicians is 1 to 1100, because we have nurses that are going to multiple schools. And guidance counselors, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the recommended ratio is 1 to 250. The BPS ratio is 1 to 760. Now, these investments are critical to student health and to academic and life success. We do have a funding problem, but that is not our, but it is not our only problem, and it is not insurmountable. I know and value our dedicated BPS staff from the bowling building to the classroom, and I know how hard our budget team works, and I appreciate all of you. I know how each of you deliberate and think holistically about your priorities and how to make these decisions, but I simply can't vote in support of this BPS budget when the critical social-emotional learning investments are lacking. These supports determine the academic and life trajectories for our students. I'm especially grateful for Dr. Carla Estrada, Dr. Amalio Nieves, and their team in the Health and Wellness Department. You do so much with so little. It is for this reason I have voted no on the last two budget cycles on the BPS budget, and will do so again today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. Councilor Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you. And I rise to first commend and thank my good colleague, Mark Siomo, from Austin-Brighton, who's done an extraordinary job during most of my tenure on the Boston City Council. He makes it so much easier for each and every one of us throughout, throughout the year to understand and to prioritize matters of ways and means. And as a friend and, and someone who truly appreciates your effort, I want to say thank you. And to all my colleagues, you all did an extraordinary job this budget season, and I was not as prevalent as I have been in the past, and I watched much of what you all did in regard to this budget, and feel extremely comfortable, as Councilor Lamontina said, that the city's in good hands and with good stewards and ombudsmen in the future. And some of the rhetoric that I heard here today regarding the budget, it truly encourages me that the city will continue to be one great place to live and learn and to visit and work. I want to thank the central staff, because it's, this is a very tough part of the year, the quarter where the halls are filled all the time with hearings, and to thank all the members of the central staff and Kate for her great work over the years during my tenure on the council. And I want to thank the Walsh administration for the extraordinary job that they've done, and this being their fourth budget, if I'm right. Fourth? Yes, fourth budget. And in each year, it gets better, and each year, our city gets better. And me being a product-based person, what's the result? What's the product? The product continues to be better and better. This city is in an extraordinary place right now. It won't always be that way, and when I first came on, the financial crisis hit nine months later. And so it was a whole different time. Right now, we're in extraordinary place, and I think we're spending wisely, we're, we're investing wisely, and, and truly excited about the way the Walsh administration's moving forward. I was up at the State House yesterday testifying on Winter Square and how important it is for the, for that project and that home move petition to pass, because that's $153 million. And I said to each state rep and state senator, because it was a joint committee, that wouldn't you all like to be in a position to advocate for that sort of opportunity for your city and your town and your municipality? So this is my last budget, and again, I want to thank you all and wish you all the best in that. And thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Linehan. Councilor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to give a huge thank you, as everyone else has, to central staff. They certainly are the behind-the-scenes heroes in this work, and the budget process really gives them an opportunity to shine. I also would like to give a shout-out to my team, in particular Jessica Rodriguez, who made sure that I was prepared for every hearing, and her and my staff supported my goals throughout this process. I'd like to, I think most importantly, thank Councilor Siomo, as he knows I've attended every hearing, and every hearing, and he ran everyone like a machine, and they were very productive and certainly informative. And as I attended every meeting, I've got some extensive notes here to comment on. It was certainly exciting through this process to see the public's participation. The advocates did an amazing job, and as Councilor Siomo led throughout this process, he ensured that everyone had an opportunity to participate. I was especially impressed by the dedicated hearing to public testimony only. It was great work, and I certainly hope that that's something that will continue. Today, I am pleased to vote for an operating and capital budget that supports our most vulnerable citizens. It's fiscally sound and responsible and reflects so much of what the council has advocated for. As Chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, I went into this process with a number of priorities. Opioid addiction is a crisis, and frankly, the healthcare system is an absolute mess. And along the step of steps to care, our residents see that mess. The PATHS program helps those struggling with addiction and their families navigate this crazy system so that they can get help and work toward lifelong recovery. I am grateful that this budget will expand operation of PATH to seven days a week. I am also proud that this budget will double the capacity for the Mobile Sharps team. Councilor Baker and Councilor McCarthy have stood by me every step of the way in advocating for additional investments in this program, and I'd like to thank them for their partnership and their leadership. A few weeks ago, I had an opportunity to do a ride-along with the Mobile Sharps team, and I learned that they do much more than just pick up needles. Don't get me wrong, they pick up a lot of needles. We know the number is 20,000 last year alone, but in practice, they are also street outreach workers, connecting with people who are struggling with addiction, mental health issues, and homelessness, people in crisis. I am grateful for their work, and I am excited to see what they'll be able to do with even more support. I'd like to thank my counselor, my colleague, Councilor Presley, for her great work advocating for those who are experiencing trauma. It is no doubt where her passion, her advocacy, and her core lie. I was honored to partner with her and Police Commissioner Evans to advocate for the expansion of the BPS program, which puts mental health clinicians on the front lines with police officers. These clinicians help defuse crisis situations and keep everyone safe. This budget will permanently fund four new clinicians in addition to the two positions that are currently grant-funded. This investment shows our commitment to supporting those in crisis, and it will save lives. We have had some incredible victories when it comes to homelessness over the last few years. We have helped 1,100 chronically homeless individuals find permanent supportive housing and have officially ended chronic veterans homelessness in the city, but there is still much more to do. The solution to homelessness is permanent supportive housing, and that's why I'm proud to join Councilor Zachem and Wu and many of my other colleagues in advocating for a city-funded voucher program. These vouchers could be a valuable tool in our fight against homelessness, and although we aren't there yet in this budget, I believe that we are closer than ever before. Our fight to end homelessness has been largely funded by the federal government, and there is no better example of the impacts that shifting federal priorities have had on our city than what has happened to the SOAR and Safe Harbor program, as Councilor Jackson has highlighted. Last week, I brought together a group of advocates for these programs and representatives from the administration to continue to promote dialogue and partnership. Although we can't save those programs or replace federal funding, I am grateful that the administration has committed to using whatever resources are at their disposal to help clients from SOAR and Safe Harbor find permanent supportive housing and keep them stable in the meantime. I think that one of the best budget hearings I participated in was the transportation hearing. The public testimony was powerful, and the advocates made a great case for increased Vision Zero investment and capacity building at BTP, and I'm so happy to support those investments today. In the capital budget in general, we are making some exciting investments. In parks, $5 million for Jamaica Pond, congratulations, Councilor O'Malley, our libraries, and laying the foundation for real investments in our school facilities with Build BPS. I'm looking forward to supporting our capital budget. But the Boston Public Schools budget is a harder decision for me. BPS transportation is a problem. We are still prioritizing transportation over education, and it hurts our kids. I will continue to work with the school committee and all of my colleagues here on this issue, but this isn't just a money problem, it's a policy problem. As a body, we need to do a better job and bring BPS back to the table in September to check in specifically on transportation. We had some surprises this year on some funding that we thought would realize in savings last year, and we can't allow that to happen. It's our responsibility to make sure it doesn't. I'm an advocate for common sense operational changes that will make life better for our BPS kids and their families. I think the best example of this is later high school start times. I'd like to thank Councilor O'Malley for all of his partnership in this work. I know we made a great case, and I'm disappointed that we weren't able to make later high school start times happen this year, but we will continue this fight. When I look at this budget, I understand that it isn't perfect. As elected officials, we so many times wish we had a magic wand to wave and make sweeping changes and reforms to solve major systematic issues. But there isn't a magic wand, there is only our hard work and some of our tough decisions. And today, I can't let perfect be the enemy of good. Last year, when I asked the superintendent about the 4,000 students experiencing homelessness, he admitted that they weren't doing enough, and it showed. In the entire FY17 BPS budget, there was only one mention and two lines about these incredibly vulnerable students. When I think about where we were then and where we are now, it seems unreal. In the last year, BPS has brought on additional staff to support the coordination of transportation for students experiencing homelessness. They have expanded the capacity of the Office of Social-Emotional Learning and have begun a strategic planning process for the Homeless Education Resources Network. They have come to the table with BHA and DND's Continuum of Care Leadership Council and worked in partnership to create a pilot program that will foster opportunities for housing and stability for families experiencing homelessness. I am very proud to be a part of that work. But perhaps the single most exciting thing for me in all of this is that now, today, instead of one line and two mentions, I get to cast my vote in favor of a new $1.2 million investment in school-based supports for students experiencing homelessness. This money will give schools the resources they need to create so many supports for these students, and I am so grateful and hopeful. There is still work to do, there will always be work to do, but I look forward to continuing this work with all of you, my colleagues on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sabi George. Councilor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I rise also as my last budget as a Boston City Councilor, and I want to thank Councilor Siomo for his work and dedication to preparing budgets and to sitting through hours and hours of budget hearings. I want to thank him for his steadfast hand in that. I want to thank Kate and also all of our central staff for the work that they continue to do. We are because you are. We are as good as the work that you put in front of us, and you make us look good. Thank you, Carrie, for making me look skinny. And, okay, that wasn't a joke, actually, but no. But I want to thank the central staff, and I also want to thank Council President Wu for the steady hand that you've had and also for bringing our council together in a way that I don't believe we've had in the past. The lunches and the connections and the depth of interaction, this go-round has been one of the best I've had on my tenure at the council, so I want to thank you for that. And I also, I want to thank the budget staff who presented to us. I believe that they worked hard. I believe that they tried their best. But I actually, it's my last go-round, so I'm going to leave it all on the field. And I start, my framing is from Mother Teresa. She said, "At the end of our lives, we will not be judged by how many diplomas we received, how much money we made, or how many great things we have done. We will be judged by, 'I was hungry and you gave me food to eat; I was naked and you clothed me; I was homeless and you took me in.'" That's our judgment. And I would say to you, on the operating budget, we are not doing that. By not standing up for the $5 million in housing vouchers, because by the way, tents don't house people. Real solutions to homelessness are actual housing. And those 400 families can't wait any longer at the base of the highway or next to Melnea Cass or any of the crevices and cracks under bridges in the city of Boston. That is a stain on us as a city, it's a stain on us as a council, and we have to step forward and do something today. They can't wait. And so what I would state to you, many of the folks behind me are folks who I've spoken to, and this issue around Project SOAR and Project Safe Harbor is an artificially-created city of Boston creation that hurt the most vulnerable people in the city of Boston by no fault of their own. Folks who were doing the right thing, who had earned their way and actually paved their way to recovery. They were solidly in recovery. And based on the city of Boston, Boston Public Health Commission, the mayor's office, and also, it now becomes on us, we are removing services from the most vulnerable folks among us, and I know some of them have been restored, but let's also talk about the 10 individuals who now are not in recovery. We're complicit in that. Three individuals who are incarcerated. We are complicit in that. And this budget furthers that complicity, and so on the operating budget, I cannot support an operating budget in a city that has over $144 million of net new revenue that can't liberate $5 million of that to help homeless folks. After we closed access to a bridge to hundreds of homeless beds and detox services and therefore putting them into a tailspin. So again, I will not co-sign on a budget that does that in the city of Boston. And let's talk about, I'm Chair of Education, I loved having this opportunity, I want to thank you, Madam President. Boston Public Schools combined in 4th and 8th grade test scores are number one in the United States of America. We actually have a lot to be proud of in our public school system. We have great teachers in our public school system who sadly get attacked and don't get the support that they need, want, actually deserve in the Boston Public Schools. And they are dealing with, as noted, and I want to thank Councilor Sabi George, she's one of those teachers, 4,000 homeless students. Right? So $1 million can't fix homelessness in the Boston Public Schools. And by the way, if we're not providing them housing, that $1 million is for not. We're not providing the solution. And that, but one of the cores of that is so folks don't get into that situation in the first place. And you know what that means? That means we need to support the Boston Public Schools. This is the one department that, and it's not $40 million, and I'll say it again, it is absolutely categorically not $40 million that's being offered to the school department. Let's understand what this budget means. $40 million, top line, $11 million of that has to go into a reserve for the teacher contract. Okay? That leaves $29 million. Of that $29 million year over year, $20 million of that are new programs. So year over year, the weighted student formula increases are $9 million. Madam President, $9 million on a billion-dollar budget. That represents less than 1%. And by the way, that represents half of the increase that we voted on last year, which was $18 million. I think we do need to also note, last year in the budget, the Boston Police budget, over time only, was increased by $36 million. This is a value statement. It's a question of who are we in the city of Boston? Who are we as a council if we don't restore the autistic funding that was cut last year? Who are we if we don't restore the trauma funding that was cut last year? And who are we when we cut 49 schools by $11 million and we replace that funding by Level 3, 4, and 5 supports of $1.5 million? This budget kicks several Level 4 schools while they're down. Brighton High School is now a Level 4 school, getting almost a million-dollar cut. Madison Park Vocational Technical School is our only vocational technical high school, and they are also getting cut yet again in the city of Boston that has more than we've ever had in the past. In addition, this budget views our, and the verbiage, the vernacular views our schools as a deficit versus the asset that they are. So this school budget is wholly wrong and inept, and it widens the achievement gap. And to Councilor Campbell's question there, the Opportunity Achievement Gap Task Force of the Boston School Committee testified against this budget. The Black Educators Alliance of Massachusetts testified against this budget, and the Citywide Parent Council testified against this budget. And Councilor Presley has a point. Our counselors and nurses cannot keep up with the students that they have because the ratios are all wrong. And this is one of the most fundamental basic city services that we provide, and not investing in the front end will affect budgets at the end. I would note that I can't, in all conscience, vote for an education budget that does not fully fund the Boston Public Schools, that does not plan for the future of the young people in the city of Boston, and does not restore the funds to the most vulnerable among us, and also co-signs on the closure of a school over the objection of the community in Matapan, the Matapan. And I close, as I started, "At the end of our lives, we will not be judged by how many diplomas we have received, how much money we have made, or how many great things that we have done. We will be judged by, 'I was hungry and you gave me food to eat; I was naked and you clothed me; I was homeless and you took me in.'" Thank you, Mother Teresa, for being our guiding light here. I will not be, I will be voting against the operating budget, I will be voting against the school budget, because these budgets do not properly use the funds that we have in the city of Boston to help the most vulnerable among us, and it really does boil down to the value that we are showing in those most vulnerable among us. Thank you for this opportunity, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Councilor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I take this opportunity to commend and thank our colleague for a very thoughtful, very fair, and very deliberative process. We all had opportunities to ask questions and to do multiple rounds with the administration. So again, Mark, obviously, credit to your community, your district, but also credit to this body and the great work that you do. Also, credit to our mayor for his priorities and for his administration, to work with them throughout the budget process was a pleasure, and also recognizing that his priorities are our priorities, whether you're a district or an at-large counselor. There's something for everyone in this budget. Unfortunately, we don't have money trees out at City Hall Plaza, but we all take turns going out watering them. We also recognize we can't fee and fine our residents into submission, we can't keep going into their pockets, and every time you turn around to try to hit them on the property tax, it's just not fair. It's not reasonable, it's not responsible. We need to identify and weed out and eliminate waste when we can do that. I concur with our colleague, Councilor Campbell, again through the chair, and would love to engage a discussion. I think that the time has come, I referenced this several years ago, that a 112 budget, a very bold and very aggressive step, may be what we need to do with respect to the BPS budget. Again, just a suggestion, doing a 112 budget will bring about the accountability, will eliminate will eliminate the waste, will break up the fiefdoms, will address duplication of services, will eliminate programs that have outlived their usefulness, are no longer working properly. Allow us to go into innovation. We're in a global economy. We have the best colleges and universities in the world. It's not just about graduating our kids anymore. What good is it if they graduate, come across the stage with their diploma and they can't get into these great institutions? And if they do get in, some of them, most of them struggle to compete and to remain there for four years. That's what we need to do. Putting the focus on teaching and learning and the social and emotional wraparound services, our school sports programs, before and after school programs, SAT prep. Those are the things we should be focusing on. And if people don't think in a $1 billion budget that there aren't fiefdoms and there's not waste and we can't eliminate some of that, I think we're sadly mistaken. And so I would recognize and would work with Council Campbell, anyone on this body, as well as the school department. And that may be the bold step that this body needs to take. There'll be some pain associated with that. We'll have to obviously work with the administration. Maybe the time has come to do a 112 budget for BPS. Again, just food for thought. But again, I'm here to say that I'm supporting the operating, supporting the capital, supporting the BPS budget, supporting OPEB, and supporting Vision Zero. And lastly, just like to note with respect to BPS, personally, and I've been here as the longest-serving city council, I have to tell you that the addition of Rob Consalvo to BPS, his accessibility, his passion, his attention to detail, his problem-solving ability meant the world and it sort of earned my support with respect to BPS. Again, we're not going to be able to solve everyone's problems in this budget. We don't have money trees, as I mentioned, out at the plaza. But we try to do the best we can as stewards in accepting the fiduciary responsibility of the residents and the voters of Boston. But I have to tell you that, quite frankly, it's the best I've ever seen to have a liaison working on behalf of the superintendent and to be able to coordinate and communicate with this body. For me, and I think I would argue for all of us, was invaluable throughout this process. And so kudos to Mayor Walsh for selecting, former colleague of mine, former colleague of several here, but made a huge difference, I feel personally, in this budget process. And we'll look forward to working with Rob and the superintendent moving forward with respect to the accountability portion that Council Campbell and others had mentioned here today. So again, very thoughtful, very deliberative process, very thoughtful and deliberate budget, trying to do the best we can with what we have within our limitations and recognizing that there's lots of other departments out there. Oftentimes, some of those smaller departments that do great work, there's the unsung heroes, those unsung departments in the city of Boston that make it such a great place to live and to work and to raise your family. Oftentimes, there's oversight or at least get lost in the shuffle because we sort of focus on the big three. We focus on the schools, we focus on the police, we focus on the fire, we focus on our parks and recreation. But a lot of great departments are able to sort of get what they need in this budget. And so for the folks that work in this building, for those smaller departments that didn't get mentioned today and normally don't get mentioned, you know, this budget's for you. And it's a testament and thank you for the hard work and service and the value that you add to our city, day in and day out in the city of Boston. So this budget should never come down to sort of one department or pitting one department against another department. It's a rising tide and we need to make sure that we're servicing, you know, obviously our most vulnerable residents. We have a primary responsibility to put our best foot forward with educating our children. But same token, there are lots of things that come with function, with a city and to have it function and run properly, whether it's the store removal and the trash pickup, it's all of it. Our libraries, I could go on and on and on in terms of those smaller departments that just do great work, tremendous added value to our city. And the workers, the people that actually, city workers that go there day in and day out, they make it such a great, a great day today. So when you're passing this budget, it's not, again, not everyone's going to be completely pleased that they didn't get everything that they wanted. And just, I just say, just think about those smaller departments and those employees that go to work every day, doing great things for the city of Boston. So with that, those five votes will be, we're voting in the affirmative. I appreciate your time and attention, Madam Chairman, to my colleagues as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Does anyone else have a comment? Elton McCarthy, you have the floor.
Yeah, I don't know what happened there. I pushed the button, you know. The best thing about going last council president is that everybody said, most of my speech, it kept getting smaller and smaller, which is a good thing. Thanks to Mark, Dave Sweeney, his entire team, Neil, Robbie Consalvo. Everybody's been thanked. I will be voting for the affirmative for a bunch of reasons. I think the operations and capital budget is truly a recommitment to the basic city services. Sal said, Council Lamatina said, a new commitment to the city. Just in my district in District Five, we have new parks in Mattapan, Rosendale, High Park, and Reedville. There's a new push where, you know, people's, my motto has always been, what you see outside your front door is important. And I believe that this administration feels the same way. And I walk around the city, I walk around my district and I see cleaner sidewalks, better streets, new trees, new parks, new young families. Obviously, something's going on in the water around here. And there's going to be more young families coming. The housing boom with single-family homes and, you know, I see my neighborhood and it's been, it's been completely just re-energized. This administration and this budget, listen. Adding $1 million to Vision Zero is a big deal. You know, the Boston Bikes and Walk Rosendale, my partners in Mattapan Food and Fitness, all of my High Park, Mattapan, and Rosendale Main Streets District. Vision Zero is important to them. And the mayor and his administration listened and learned, and we stepped forward to that. I'm very proud of a city that's been focusing on housing and ending homelessness. And as a Chair of Veterans Affairs, it's a big deal to eliminate veteran homelessness. And we consistently are assisting people, not only just to achieve temporary housing, but to achieve home. And we're doing that. I'm very proud of that in this budget. Now, the BPS budget, it's a long, long process. And I think Council Campbell, Council Sabby George, you know, they know how I feel about transportation. They sat in that hearing with me. Transportation drives me crazy. I did listen to Council George's, Sabby George's comment, when she said, "Don't let perfect get in the way of good." And, you know, I've always felt that the BPS Transportation Department is a disaster, $110 million plus, to have four or five kids driving a 45 past your bus all over the city. We've talked about the carbon footprint, the diesel fuel, the gas, the traffic impact, and the fact that it doesn't make any sense. And now this next year, as we go into this next, you know, I give BPS a heads up, we're going to make changes in the transportation. We're going to make big changes. And whether it's putting kids in vans, or, you know, for $110 million, you could probably Uber every kid to and from school. It might be cheaper. You know, you might put a lot of people to work, too. You know, these are real thoughts and we need to get on the same page, whether it's MBTA passes or how we're going to do it. But driving into work every day, and I, you know, I live the farthest away from this building than anybody, I guarantee it. And when I'm driving in, in my hour and 15, hour and a half commute, I see buses stopped in the middle of Columbia Road. They flip open their stop sign, one kid gets on, and there's four kids. That makes a whopping total of four kids in a 50-foot-long bus. And we've been yapping about this for the last, this is my fourth budget. We've been talking about it. And I think the talk is over. And I like the way my fellow councils are talking. It's time to open up, you know, open up the picture and maybe think outside the box and really come to a conclusion. Because I live in the Reedville section of High Park. We have 300 buses there. And every morning, 300 bus drivers go to Reedville, 300 buses leave, then 300 buses come back, then 300 drivers leave, and then 300 drivers come back, and then the buses leave, and then they come back, and then the dies leave again. And that's where you get all this traffic from. So there's a lot of things we're going to do for transportation. I'm looking forward. I think Council Flaherty hit it right in the head. It's wonderful to have Robbie over there and his staff. He gets it. He gets this stuff. He's not in a silo of BPS. He understands the city as well as anybody. It's going to be a pleasure to work with him. I don't think voting no for this, this BPS budget is good for the children. It's not a personal thing. It's not about likes on a Facebook page. It's about the kids that go for the city of Boston. And by cutting, by voting no, you'd be cutting over $20 million to the BPS budget. And that would hurt extended daycare right now. It would extend extended school right now. And that's why I'll be voting yes for the budget. And I will, looking forward to, once when everything, the dust settles, as they will, getting right back at BPS and transportation and working on a solution. So thanks again to Mark. That's an awful lot of hours you spend and you do a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. Seeing no other lights to comment, at this time, we will vote on the motion before us, which Council Siomo has put forth, to vote on these four dockets that have been read into the record. After that, we'll pause and I believe bring the capital budgets dockets to the floor as well. So each of these will be a roll call vote. We'll start with docket 0908, the general operating budget. Madam Clerk, please.
Docket number 0908, Council Baker. Council Baker, yes. Council Campbell. Council Campbell, yes. Council Siomo. Council Siomo, yes. Council Sabby George. Council Sabby George, yes. Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, yes. Council Jackson. Council Jackson, no. Council Lamatina. Council Lamatina, yes. Council Linehan. Council Linehan, yes. Council McCarthy. Council McCarthy, yes. Council O'Malley. Council O'Malley, yes. Council Presley. Council Presley, yes. Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. And Council Zachem. Council Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0908 passed with a 12 to 1.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0908, the general operating budget, has been passed with a 12 to 1 vote. For docket 0909, the Boston Public Schools operating budget.
Docket number 0909, Council Baker. Council Baker, yes. Council Campbell. Council Campbell, yes. Council Siomo. Council Siomo, yes. Council Sabby George. Council Sabby George, yes. Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, yes. Council Jackson. Council Jackson, no. Council Lamatina. Council Lamatina, yes. Council Linehan. Council Linehan, yes. Council McCarthy. Council McCarthy, yes. Council O'Malley. Council O'Malley, yes. Council Presley. Council Presley, no. Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. And Council Zachem. Council Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket 0909 passed with a 7 vote in favor, 2 vote in opposition.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0909, the Boston Public Schools operating budget, has been passed with an 11 to 2 vote. Docket 0910 is the OPEB Liability Trust Fund.
Council Baker. Council Baker, yes. Council Campbell. Council Campbell, yes. Council Siomo. Council Siomo, yes. Council Sabby George. Council Sabby George, yes. Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, yes. Council Jackson. Council Jackson, yes. Council Lamatina. Council Lamatina, yes. Council Linehan. Council Linehan, yes. Council McCarthy. Council McCarthy, yes. Council O'Malley. Council O'Malley, yes. Council Presley. Council Presley, yes. Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. And Council Zachem. Council Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0910 passed with a 7 vote.
Thank you. Docket 0910, the appropriation to the OPEB Liability Trust Fund has been passed unanimously. And docket 0911 is the appropriation, the $1 million appropriation for Vision Zero.
Docket number 0911, Council Baker. Council Baker, yes. Council Campbell. Council Campbell, yes. Council Siomo. Council Siomo, yes. Council Sabby George. Council Sabby George, yes. Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, yes. Council Jackson. Council Jackson, yes. Council Lamatina. Council Lamatina, yes. Council Linehan. Council Linehan, yes. Council McCarthy. Council McCarthy, yes. Council O'Malley. Council O'Malley, yes. Council Presley. Council Presley, yes. Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. And Council Zachem. Council Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0911 passed with a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Docket 0911, the appropriation for the Vision Zero capital line item has passed with a unanimous vote. At this time, Council Siomo, would you like to bring the others forth?
Can we take the capital out of order at this point from a sign from further action?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, could you please take the, read the dockets from the green sheets, making up the capital budget into the record? Docket 0539 through 0543.
Docket 0539, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to appropriate the amount of $45 million, 300, I'm sorry, $45 million, 385,000 from the city's capital grant fund in order to provide funding for various transportation and public rail improvements. These projects are aligned with the goals of the Go Boston 2030, the city's transportation master plan. The funds shall be credited to the capital grant fund from the Parking Meter Fund. Docket number 0540, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to enter into one or more lease, leases, lease purchase or installment sales agreements in fiscal year 2018 in an amount not to exceed $27 million, 500,000. These funds are to be used by various city departments for the acquisition of equipment and furtherance of their respective governmental functions. The list of equipment includes computer equipment, hardware and software, motor vehicles, trailers, ambulances, firefighting equipment, office equipment, telecommunication equipment, photocopying equipment, medical equipment, school and educational equipment, school buses, parking meter, parking meters, street lighting, installation, traffic signal equipment and equipment functionally related to and components of the foregoing. Docket number 0541, the message in order for an appropriation in the amount of $255,260, sorry, 200, slight miss, $255,260,000 for the acquisition of interest in land or the acquisition of assets for the landscaping, alteration, remediation, rehabilitation of improvement of public land. The construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, improvement, alteration, remodeling, enlargement, demolition, removal or extraordinary repairs of public buildings, facilities, assets, work or infrastructure for the cost of feasibility studies or engineering or architectural services for plans and specifications for the development, design, purchase and installation of computer hardware or software and computer-assisted integrated financial management and accounting system for any other public work improvement or asset with a maximum useful life of at least five years and not otherwise specified for planting shade trees for the purpose of various city departments, including the Boston Center for Youth and Families, Boston Redevelopment Authority, Boston Department of Innovation and Technology, Public Work, School and Transportation Department. Docket number 0542, message in order in the amount of $3,135,000 for the construction and rehabilitation of municipal golf courses, including the acquisition and reconstruction of land, installation and replacements of irrigation systems, the construction and rehabilitation of buildings and the cost of equipment and furnishing for the purpose of the Park and Recreation Department. And docket number 0543, message in order for an appropriation in the amount of $660,000 in aid of the Economic Development Industrial Corporation in the Boston Redevelopment Authority, DBA, Boston Planning and Development Agency for the engineering and design of improvements at the Raymond L. Flynn Marine Park.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Each of these five capital docket items have received a favorable first reading at the June 7, 2017 meeting. So this will be the second reading and vote. We'll start with docket 0539, the appropriation from the Parking Meter Fund. Madam Clerk, please.
Docket number 0539, second reading. Council Baker. Council Baker, yes. Council Campbell. Council Campbell, yes. Council Siomo. Council Siomo, yes. Council Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0539 has received the second reading with a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0539 has received a unanimous second reading and has been passed. Docket 0540 is the capital budget docket for equipment.
Docket number 0540, second reading. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Ciomo. Counsel Ciomo, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0540 has received the second reading with a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Docket 0540 has been passed with a unanimous second reading. Docket 0541 is the capital line for, capital docket number for public land and public buildings improvement.
Docket number 0541, second reading. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Ciomo. Counsel Ciomo, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0541 has received the second reading and was passed.
Thank you. Docket 0541 has been passed with a unanimous second reading. Docket 0542 is the capital line for municipal golf courses and parks.
Docket number 0542 for second reading. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Ciomo. Counsel Ciomo, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0542 has received the second reading and was passed.
Thank you. Docket 0542 has been passed with a unanimous second reading. And finally, docket 0543 is a specific appropriation, capital appropriation for the Raymond L. Flynn Marine Park.
Docket number 0543 for second reading. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Ciomo. Counsel Ciomo, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0543 has received the second reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0543 has been passed with a unanimous second reading. Thank you again, Chairman Ciomo, and that concludes our budget votes. We will proceed with docket number 0465. And Madam Clerk, actually, if you could read docket 0465 through 0472.
Docket number 0465, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Bruce Stichesstaff as a member of the Board of Appeal for term expiring July 1, 2018. Docket number 0466, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Anthony Pizzani as a member of the Board of Appeal for term expiring July 1, 2018. Docket number 0467, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Bruce Stichesstaff as a member of the, excuse me, member of the Board of Appeal for term expiring July 1, 2018. Docket number 0468, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Eugene Kelly as a member of the Board of Appeal for term expiring July 1, 2018. Docket number 0469, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Kerry Walsh Loeb as a member of the Board of Appeal for term expiring November 1, 2019. Docket number 0470, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Tyrone Kendall, Kendall Jr. as a member of the Board of Appeal for term expiring October 1, 2019. Docket number 0471, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Mark Fortune as a member of the Board of Appeal for term expiring June 1, 2018. And docket number 0472, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Mark Urle as a member of the Board of Appeal for term expiring September 1, 2019.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Planning and Development, Counsel Linehan.
Thank you, Madam President. Due to a fire drill and some miscommunication yesterday, we decided to postpone the hearing. We will reschedule and ask that the members appear and that these confirmations remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Dockets 0465 through 0472 will remain in the Committee on Planning and Development.
Docket number 0881, order for hearing regarding medical marijuana dispensary at 331 Newberry Street, Boston.
Again, Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Planning and Development, Counsel Linehan.
Thanks again, Madam President. Representatives of Compassionate Organics were in to see us yesterday, seeking approval or non-opposition to opening a medical marijuana dispensary at 331 Newberry Street in the Back Bay. We had at least six councilors that were present, including the District Councilor, Counsel Zachem for that district. We listened to them, asked the appropriate questions, and I would like to give the District City Council an opportunity to weigh in at this time, but we are proposing that we recommend for this petition it with a letter of non-opposition from the Boston City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Counsel Linehan for chairing the committee and helping us schedule it and work through in a timely manner. And my colleagues who were there and were asking insightful questions of this operator and their team, we heard from their security advisor, we heard from their attorney, Mike Ross, a former member of this body, and members of the community. In my discussions with this operator, Compassionate Organics, and several of the neighbors, both residential and business, the general consensus and one that I share is that this operator should be allowed to move forward in the process, which is what this does at this point. This is not a final decision on suitability of either location or the operator, but in order for them to move forward through the State Department of Public Health approval process, this body does need to offer this letter of non-opposition, which is exactly what that is. I personally am reserving judgment on this until more of a community process, but I do think they've shown at the baseline level that this could be an appropriate location and that they do have the expertise to operate there. So I would ask my colleagues to join me in supporting this. There is further steps to be taken, both the State Department of Public Health level at the Zoning Board of Appeal. Then his last budget, he's all set, at the state zoning, at the city zoning board of appeal and at the Boston Public Health Commission. But anyway, I would ask you all again to join me in supporting this letter of non-opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I support this moving forward, Compassionate Organics moving forward in the process. I did just want to say on the record, I've had conversations with them offline and look forward to partnering with them to ensure that should this go forward, that equity is at the center of this and we're assuring equitable opportunities in, you know, licensing and hiring and in workforce. And we'll be following up with them further based on recommendations made for the entire industry by the Mass Black and Latino Legislative Caucus, members of this council and the Equitable Opportunities Now Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. At this time, Counsel Linehan moves for acceptance of the committee report, which would mean that the committee would then send out the letter of non-opposition, which is a standard form document as required by the state in, consistent with our previous letters issued by the council. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the committee report and sending the letter of non-opposition, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0881 will, has not, the letter of non-opposition will be sent. Personnel orders.
Docket number 0955, Counsel Wu for Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Jackson moves for suspension and passage of docket 0955. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0955 has been passed.
Docket number 0956, Counsel Wu for Counsel Jackson.
And Counsel Jackson moves for suspension and passage of docket 0956. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0956 has been passed.
Docket number 0957, Counsel Wu offered the following order for the appointment.
Chair moves for suspension and passage of docket 0957. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, docket 0957 has been passed.
Docket number 0958, Counsel Wu for Counsel Ciomo.
And Counsel Ciomo moves for suspension and passage of docket 0958. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0958 has been passed. I'm informed by the clerk that there is one late filed matter, which is personnel in nature and will be added to the agenda in absence of objection. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please read that late file?
Thank you, Madam President. Counsel Michelle Wu for Counsel Lamatina.
Counsel Lamatina moves for suspension and passage of the first late file. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the first late file has been passed. There's also one late filed matter for the consent agenda. Hearing no objection to adding it, the matter is added. Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda is adopted. I'll pause. Is there, would anyone like to pull a matter from the green sheets? Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm looking to pull docket number 0601, which is on page 8 of 10 of the green sheet.
Okay. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0601 into the record?
In the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, docket number 0601, sponsored by the mayor, message in order authorizing the City of Boston for acceptance and spend a grant of $25,000 in the form of a grant awarded by Patriot Care Corporation to be administered by the police department. The grant would fund the purchase and installation of public safety cameras and accompanying hardware.
Thank you. Docket 0601 now before the council. Counsel Campbell.
I'm looking to suspend and pass this today. Unfortunately, this docket was referred on April 26, 2017. We couldn't find a date. They're waiting this money, which obviously is a donation from Patriot Care to District A1. And they've, there's a ton of cameras downtown already, but this, these cameras in particular will be placed around the medicinal marijuana dispensary at 21 Milk Street. This is the first $25,000 of a $50,000 grant, which will be paid to the police department over two years. The cameras will be specifically placed near the dispensary at Washington Street and Milk Street, Washington and School and Milk and Devonshire. And while BPD does have an extensive network down there, neighbors and business owners felt safer with the addition of these cameras and therefore approved the medicinal marijuana with this condition placed upon the dispensary. So Patriot Care has donated the money, looking to suspend and pass this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Campbell. Any questions or comments for Counsel Campbell? Hearing none. At this time, Counsel Campbell moves for passage of docket 0601. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0601 has been passed. Any other matters from the green sheets? We'll pause for statements or announcements. Counsel O'Malley, for what purpose do you rise?
I ask unanimous consent to make a brief statement, Madam President.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I wanted to just mention, one of the people for whom we'll be closing in memory of today is Joe Collin, OFD, lived in the South Shore in his married years, and he ran the EAP program, worked in the EAP programs for the City of Boston for many years. He was a remarkable individual. I got to know him through my prior life when I was working on campaigns. We became fast friends and he was as funny and dry and as committed as anyone I've ever known. And he was diagnosed with cancer back in the, in the winter. And he was still working up as long as he could. I last talked to him a couple months ago. He was feeling better, sounding better, was planning on coming back, working a little bit part-time this summer and fall. We were going to get together for lunch, but unfortunately, the cancer just ravaged and, and we lost him on Friday. And I just wanted to mention him because even if you didn't know him, you know someone whose life he saved, both literally and figuratively. He's very upfront about his own recovery, was a friend of Bill W.'s for many, many years and was never preachy about it and just helpful to those suffering from addiction and their families as well. And he just, he, he's one of those, you know, quiet, unassuming people that you may not have known him directly, but I guarantee you know people whose life he changed. So just wanted to say thanks, Joe, and, and we're really going to miss him. City lost to great guys. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Presley, for what purpose do you rise?
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I'm days away from the six-year transition anniversary of my mother. That is very hard to believe. And, you know, I just, of course, I miss her, especially as an only child, you know, every minute of every day, but especially approaching her anniversary. She's at the fore of my mind and I just can't help but to remember the words of my friend, former Suffolk County Sheriff and Secretary of Public Safety Andrea Cabral, who said, you know, people are, are energy and so energy never dies. It just transforms. And when you lose someone, especially a parent, that you absorb the best parts of them. I hope that's been true. And so in tribute to my mother, I did just want to make a quick statement in light of some events this morning. So my mother was a warrior for social justice and dedicated her entire life to ending hate and bigotry as an activist. So late last night, a pane of glass at Boston's Holocaust Memorial was shattered by a young man who threw a large rock through this most sacred of memorials. I share in the sadness, anger and frustration expressed by many members of the Jewish and survivor community in Boston and will always stand in solidarity with them as they seek to honor and memorialize those whose lives were lost during the Holocaust. This attack is representative of a growing number of vandals of bigotry who continue to prey upon our society, threatening our very humanity. Bigotry and injustice is pervasive and seems to be growing all around us in immeasurable forms. Lives lost to hate crimes, racist bans on refugees from Muslim-majority countries, police brutality and the destruction and defacement of sacred monuments. Actions like these infuriate us, but they do call us to rally together, to call upon our reserves of strength and political will, to mobilize, organize and speak out against bigotry in all forms. So long as we muster our collective spiritual fortitude that guides us towards justice, I'm confident that these myriad forms of bigotry will ultimately be defeated. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Presley. Council Jackson, for what purpose do you rise?
Unanimous consent to make a statement.
Please proceed.
I am in moratorium today, going to be honoring Mitchell Chester, who led the Department of Education nobly. He worked hard and was dedicated to the young people in the state of Massachusetts. The state of Massachusetts is number one in education by far in the United States of America, and I want to give him kudos. I've, we haven't, we didn't always agree, but the passion that he, he worked with, the hard work and the discipline that he brought to the table, I believe, will definitely be missed in the state of Massachusetts. But I think in that same vein, it is education that we need. In the paper this morning, I read that it was a Roxbury man who shattered that glass. And it's not only a glass and an attack on who we are, but I think in whatever was in that individual's mind, that he can't take away what we are. And we are kin, we are family in the City of Boston, and we stand up at times of difficulty and we stand up for those who have been persecuted. And as a, as someone who represents Roxbury and as a black man, I stand with my Jewish brothers and sisters in letting folks know absolutely, completely unacceptable and it's not who we are in the City of Boston. And I think it's absolutely critical that in these difficult times, a person I used to work for, he would say, in the most difficult times, we need to turn to each other and not on each other. Young people have come up with this amazing phrase now called intersectionality, which basically means we need to stick up for other folks and oftentimes they need, we need to stick up for other folks when they need it and they need to stick up for folks when we need it. I was not able to join folks earlier, but I stand in unity and solidarity with the Jewish community in the City of Boston, letting folks know that that's unacceptable. And we, we will not only rebuild the glass, we will continue to build that beloved community here in the City of Boston. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Just a quick reminder, Council Siomo has sponsored again our traditional post-budget end of the fiscal year convening in the Curly Room for councilors and central staff right afterwards, so join us for a bite. And then before then, today is our last meeting in this space as it appears and as it will appear before the renovations and lifting of the floor and other changes. So just want to ask everyone to gather for a photo with all council staff as well to remember the space and how we occupied it. And seeing no other comments, if councilors and guests could please rise. Today, the council will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Council Flaherty, Judith Smelt. For Council Lamatina, Raymond Sonny Coppola, Danine M. Zerpolo and Alea DeLisi. For Council McCarthy, Neil Kanner. For Council O'Malley, Joseph N. Cullinan Jr. and John Gottschalk, retired Boston police detective. And on behalf of the entire council, Janet M. Crozier, Anbraga's mother, and Mitchell Chester. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We're scheduled to meet again Wednesday, July 12 at 12 noon at Faneuil Hall. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, council is adjourned.